It is now 5:00 PM, March 19, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City's Housing Assets Successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez? Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez absent.
This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda per Government Code Section 549-56.3. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issues not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. I do not see anyone in the audience that would like to address the council. Therefore, can we have declaration of closed session items by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have only one item this evening for the City Council. It is real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. The property location and designation is set forth on the agenda. Negotiating parties are Mr. Metzler on behalf of the city and the San Bernardino County Flood Control District.
Thank you.
These stands for reportable action. We report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock meeting.
Thank you. We will now recess to our closed session. And we will re- It is now 5:59. We will be starting. Please take your seats. It is now 6:00, March 19, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City's Housing Assets Successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox? Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Sorry. Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez? Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez absent.
May we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We only had one item this evening. It was real property negotiations for the City Council pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. The parties to the negotiation and the property is set forth on the agenda. At this time, there is no reportable action with respect to that item.
Thank you. This evening, we do not have any proclamations or special presentations. I will ask our city clerk to present the agenda to council and any revisions to the agenda.
Do the invocation first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped my- you're right. I skipped over. At this time, we will have the invocation, and it will be delivered by Father Jude of St. John of Arc, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Police Chief Rick Bessengers. So please stand.
In God we trust, therefore let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for every blessing that you have showered upon us. And also, our beloved city Victorville. I pray for our mayor, for the various level of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interest on the issue of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Victorville. It is in your most blessed name, I pray. May God bless us all. Amen.
And I will start again. This evening, we do not have any proclamation or special presentations. And I will ask our city clerk to please present the agenda to council and any revisions to the agenda.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment or on a particular item will be required to fill out a white speaker card located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. All communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council, not to the members of the audience. In accordance with state law, the City Council may not discuss or take action on any non-agenda items. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the presiding officer. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. At this time-
Before you go on, I have a question on conflict of interest if I might, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
On the item that's coming up, there will be a public hearing, and that public hearing has on three items, three resolutions. I don't have any problems on SCLA and the Water District. And I don't think I have a problem on Resolution 19010 because in reading this, it's a confirmation of what City Council has previously approved. But I want to ask, since it does mention the golf course, if I have a conflict on that first item?
I would recommend, when we get to that item, that you actually recuse yourself with respect to that portion of the discussion that has anything to do with the golf course item. There is a line item related to the- in the budget there related to the golf course. So what I would recommend the council do is have a discussion on that item first with the exclusion of any discussion at all related to anything on the golf course. And then after we take action on that item, we can have a separate discussion on those two items that relate to the golf course with Mr. Cox being absent.
No, I don't have any problems. So I didn't want to have a public hearing, or I didn't hear two-thirds of the hearings.
Right.
All right. I'll wait until she opens. I'll wait until we do that. Thank you.
Okay, so we're on item B1, public hearings.
And again, I would request that any discussion of anything related to the golf course be withheld at this time until after we've taken action on the item, and then we can have to discuss any of those items related to the golf course separately with Mr. Cox absent.
Okay, and that's item-
B1.
B1.
That is item B1.
So does it take a motion of the council to separate those two since it's scheduled as a public hearing for all three resolutions?
You'd like to make a motion, that'd be appropriate.
Would it be appropriate for me to make the motion?
No, it'd be appropriate for somebody else to make that motion.
Ms. Jones, you want to make the motion?
Oh, um-
The motion would be to bifurcate the discussion on item B1, to take all the discussion related to the golf course and act on that separately.
Well, there we go. So moved.
Need a second?
Need a second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with-
Yeah.
Okay.
So we are on public hearings. Item B1, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against mid-year amendments to the 2018-2019 fiscal year budget. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council and Board of Directors approve the changes reflected in this agenda item and its attachments by adopting Resolution Number 19-010, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, amending Resolution Number 18-061 as amended. The budget resolution for the City of Victorville for fiscal year 2018-2019 related to an appropriation of funds, increasing the expenditures by $13,608,199, and increasing the revenues by $6,749,298, and adopting the amended table of organization, fixing the rates and compensation. Resolution Number SCLA-A19-002, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, amending Resolution SCLA-A18-002 as amended. The budget resolution for the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority for fiscal year 2018-2019 related to an appropriation of funds, increasing the expenditures by $684,677, and reducing the revenues by $183,997. And Resolution Number VWD-19-001, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Victorville Water District, amending Resolution Number VWD-18-009 as amended. The budget resolution for the Victorville Water District for fiscal year 2018-2019 relating to an appropriation of funds, increasing the expenditures by $249,294, and reducing the revenues by $475,000.
Thank you. At this time, council members, if you have any questions of staff, and I will start with Councilmember Jones.
I have none at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, before my time starts, I need clarification to what just happened. There was a motion to bifurcate. There was three votes. He wasn't able to vote on that one, and it just all of a sudden became me overhearing the city attorney saying, "We're still going to bifurcate." So would you please explain what just happened? Because I'm under no understanding what happened with the motion. Carrie didn't go through. There's three people. He can vote. He's not here, so clarify that for me.
Right. My understanding is there's a motion to bifurcate the discussion so that we have a discussion on the agenda items related to the golf course separate with Mr. Cox out of the room. We should probably handle that first since he's out of the room right now. Although, the public hearing should, for the purposes of the public, cover all of those items. Once Mr. Cox is back in the room, after we've had a vote on the golf course portion, we can discuss the other three resolutions that are on the agenda.
Are you saying that that motion passed?
Yes.
Okay.
Three, one vote. So I would take, Madam Mayor, I'd take all comments related to all and questions related to all three items, and then have a discussion separately on the golf course item first.
Okay. Very good. So you didn't have anything?
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Gomez?
Yeah, so did staff add Resolution 8-061, SCLA Resolution 18-002, and VWD-18-009 for references as to what appropriations and increases of revenues are being recommended? No, I didn't see them. But I was hoping that they were in there, and I didn't- I don't believe I saw them.
Well, Madam Mayor, City Council, the reference to those 2018 resolutions or reference being made to the original resolutions that adopted the fiscal year budget back in May- or I'm sorry, back in June of 2018.
Right. So just please be sure to add former resolutions and/or information that assists the council with rational and informative voting decisions. How will increasing the expenditures by a certain allotment and increasing the revenues by even lower amounts create such increases by these allotted monies? So if you read this, you'd know exactly what I'm talking about. If you need to refer to the resolutions before you respond to my questions, you can go ahead and please take a moment. I'm going to go ahead for the next question. Is there a reason why staff couldn't compensate the- couldn't add the compensations or resolutions on the pay rate schedule in different agendas? And I think that's what the motion was earlier. I would like to see this in future agendas, to have it literally where we can vote on each item rather than having everything together so that we don't have to have something like Mr. Cox missed some of the information, or me thinking, "Well, can I talk about the golf course right now, or can I not?" Because I'm not being cued myself. So it would really assist if we could have that already from staff providing information, knowing that something like this is going to take into account. And when did the city start looking for the homeless coordinator position? Was it an internal or an external hire? Please provide me with the information as to the hiring requirements, times, and dates.
I can speak to the first question. The second question, I think, is more the preference of the council as to whether or not it wants us to start bifurcating these items and separating them out. And then I can also answer the homeless recruitment. So speaking to the first item, and I think the notation there or the comment there was more speaking to the fundamental difference in the change in revenue versus expenditure. And there does appear, just in the recommendations and even in the resolution, that there's an imbalance, just looking at those two numbers, between the revenue and expenditure. But certainly, where you have expenditures being increased and revenues being decreased, typically you'd rely on fund balance or unencumbered fund balance, which would be akin to the cash available. So that would be the case in the airport, given its access to the line of credit. And then also, the same is the case with the Water District, as it has cash reserves for both operations, maintenance, and capital. So those are likely sources to satisfy that difference. As to pulling out the org, table of org, certainly if the council so chooses to pull that out, we can treat that as a completely separate item. But it's very traditional that that's accompanied with the budget document itself. And then finally, with respect to the homeless solutions coordinator position, that's not something that has been solicited yet. It's not been marketed yet for recruitment. We could not do so until such a time that the table of org was approved and the budget was approved, allowing for that position to be created. But the job description is something that we have drafted, and it's something among those items we've been working on since, oh, gosh, since January, I suspect, time's flying, when we were directed to start forming the task force. And this was one of those items that we identified as likely necessary, as necessary if we're to tackle the homelessness solutions in a leadership capacity.
Okay, and I have several questions that I have made copies of, and I'm going to go ahead and give it to Mr. Metzler so I can have responses.
You have 30 seconds.
And I also have a copy of all the questions that I asked, that I'm going to ask the city clerk to make a part of today's archive. So if anybody in the audience wants to ever pull it and see what kind of questions we're asking, we're limited in time. That way, you at least have the questions in writing. You can always pull them out in the archive for today's date.
There are no other questions.
So being specific to the item that I think we're voting on first with the absence of Councilmember Cox, the item that we're focused on is those that relate to the golf course or the golf course fund. I think the easiest way to describe that particular item is that largely, they're correcting entries, correcting, yeah, correcting entries involving the inter-fund loans from the sanitary fund to the general fund to satisfy, I'm sorry, strike that, from Vemus to the general fund to the sanitary fund. And one step that we missed was to include having the golf course fund. I believe it's Fund 400. Don't quote me on that. Because the loan that existed between golf and sanitary was the Fund 400. We missed that step in the original budgeting. So effectively, what this item is doing is correcting those entries so that the actual funds paid back from Vemus that was owed from Vemus to the general fund, general fund then was able to satisfy the golf course loan by using that money to pay back the sanitary fund, which was propping up the golf course deficiency for many, many years. So that's the biggest part of it. My notes tell me, and I'll allow Deputy City Manager Harris to correct me, but my notes are telling me that of the 13.6 million, 13 and a half million are correcting entries. The other entry, I'm sorry, the other item involving the golf course is approximately $47,000 on the operating side. I think it's page 37 is what Mr. Harris was telling me. And that would be the only item dealing with the operational element of the golf course. So that would be an actual expenditure. That'd be a cash issue. Everything else is more of a correcting entry issue, noncash.
Thank you.
So may I follow up on that, Madam Mayor?
Thank you. So just to make sure that everyone's really clear that on the the journal entries regarding the golf fund, the $6,600, that's just merely to make sure that the postings of the accounts are showing properly. There's no cash involved. It's just a correcting journal entry.
That is correct. Yes, there was, one thing we did not clean up was Fund 400, which was the actual golf course fund, was the owing party to the sanitary fund, and that's what we're cleaning up.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I do not have any speaker cards.
It'll be appropriate just to open the public hearing to see if anybody would like to speak.
Okay. At this time, I open the public hearing. And I do not have any speaker cards, therefore I close the public hearing. And at this time, I request a motion in a second to adopt the resolution number-
Mayor, if I might, it'd be better right now, based on Mr. Metzler's presentation, just to have a vote on those two golf course issues that he just addressed. So it would be to approve the line item correction on the golf course and the appropriation of the $48,000, so that we can then consider the resolution without any discussion about the golf course. So if that could be a motion to approve those two items, that's what we'd be looking for at this point.
Okay, the motion will be just for those two items, and that was for 47,000?
It was for about, yeah, I believe the line item is-
31,000? Forty-one?
Thirty-one.
We'll give you the exact. The exact amount is an increase for $46,242.
Forty-two? I'm not hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the page reference is page 31 of the staff report, and the actual dollar amount is $42,242. Requested increase to the contract services.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, the motion would be to-
I'm sorry, $46,242.
Forty-six?
$42.42.
And 42 cents.
Numbers are small.
Okay.
I'm happy to make a motion. All right, so I move that with regard to the golf card, excuse me, golf course issues, that we approve the line item journal entries, making sure that the original numbers were posted to the correct accounts, and also appropriate an additional $46,242.
I second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes. And it's not related just specifically to that. So my comment is, and you can correct me after I say this, because the layman person would read this just as I am reading it. So you can correct me later, but I want to make sure I'm saying what I need to say based on my interpretation. So the city manager is receiving $16,000 in travel plus car allowance. He sits as a delegate, making over half a quarter million, and has opened a position of over $75,000 to do what the city council delegated him to do. How many cities have two public information officers or an assistant to the assistant? The city manager has two city assistants and two more assistants to help his-
Madam Mayor, may I call for the orders of the day? The discussion at this point should be confined to the motion on the table.
There's a comment. We're allowed to, by policy, go through comment.
It needs to be confined to the motion pending.
That is correct. It should relate just to the golf course issues at this point. Your discussion can occur, should be, would be more appropriate.
This is going to talk to about the golf course. But if I can say when Mr. Cox is here, I mean, I'm-
Well, if you have comments about the golf course, that'd be appropriate.
We're not discussing anybody's wages or anything. We're discussing-
I can comment about this whatever I want, not what you want me to discuss. Okay, so I'll look, there is something here that I can talk to about that. I don't, it talks about golf course tax abatement and incentives. I mean, if that's illegitimate when he's here, that's the only thing I'm going to say about the golf course.
Keith, do you know what that's about?
Tax abatement for the golf course, I'm not familiar with. Can you-
Right. That's why I said if I can either say it all, and he's here, and it's not a problem, I will. But I'm being curtailed to narrow what I need to speak on. No, no, that's me, that's me making an analogy to what's happening. So that's why I said it's not necessarily that regard. So I can say that when he's here. It's not a big deal.
Well, again, the motion on the floor relates to the funding of golf course issues. So if you have comments related to the golf course, absolutely appropriate at this time. If there's other comments related to the rest of the budgetary items, we're going to handle that next. So it'd be appropriate to have those comments at that time.
Okay, so when I say golf course tax abatement and incentives, that's what I'm going to be saying, whether you feel it's appropriate or not.
That actually should be fine, because again, we're not taking any action on that item. So we have a motion and a second on the floor.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So that motion fails. So now, we should move on to the rest of item B1, and we can have Mr. Cox rejoin the discussion. For the benefit of the public, the reason that motion fails is we need three votes when it's a budgetary item.
Correct. And so, may I ask a question, Madam Mayor? Thank you. So then is the correct, it seems to me that we're legally bound to make correcting journal entries, et cetera. So are, at this point, do we venture to bring this back to the next agenda when we have another council member present that could conceivably-
I believe staff plans to do that.
And my reason for voting no is for legitimate reasons. You go out, we spend $1.2 million, $666,000 goes by the wayside, and I don't think it's fair that we continue to subsidize the golf course.
All right, now we are on the remainder of item B1, which is the three resolutions before you.
Okay. We are on Resolution Number SCLA-A19-002?
Correct, along with Resolution VWD-19-001 and Resolution of the City Council 19-010.
Okay, very good.
And again, the discussion at this point is exclusive of any discussion on any things related to the golf course funding.
Is there any discussion from you, Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, no.
Did you have any discussion on these additional items? Yes, I did. I opened the public hearing.
I don't have any questions.
Ms. Gomez?
My questions were all relayed in the packet that I gave to the city manager.
Very well. I do not have any speaker cards, therefore I'm closing. I had already, no, I'll close the public hearing at this time. And I need a motion in a second for the additional two items?
The three items, again, with the understanding that with respect to the City Council's resolution, it does not relate to the golf course.
Okay, very good. Get a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So I move that the council and boards of directors take action in accordance with the recommendations posted on the agenda, excepting any matters related to the golf course.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes. I was under the impression there was going to be a public hearing on the first item, and then held the other two separate, not a public hearing. So you held the public hearing. I wasn't in the room.
There were no-
Thing I should know about.
There were no comments on the public hearing at all.
No comments at all. I have read this item, and I have no questions on either one.
Yeah?
Thank you.
Ms. Gomez, did you have anything else?
Yes. So the city manager, the city manager, Mr. Keith Mesler, is receiving sixteen thousand dollars in travel plus car allowance, despite his monthly allowance of twenty thousand dollars a month, not a year, just so everybody knows. He sits as a delegate making over half a quarter million and has opened a position of over seventy-five thousand dollars to do what the city council delegated him to do. And I'm talking about the homeless solution coordinator. And he's a delegate, so he goes to the ICH meetings. So I just want that for the public to consume. How many cities have two public information officers or an assistant to the assistant? That's who we're hiring and we're adopting the resolution. It's unfortunate that no one spoke. The city manager has two city assistants and two more to help his assistants costing us over a million dollars. If that wasn't enough for your city tax-paying dollars, they're continuing to provide welfare to this administration. Welfare through your tax dollars continues giving certain administrative privileges and full-time wages of over a quarter million. Jim Cox about, asks about saving money but not, but doesn't approve the one thousand two hundred dollars for the year in travels for a council member, but turns a blind eye on the approximate half a million that the city attorney took in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and that's in here. Councilmember Jones, Mayor Garcia, both also turn a blind eye to the excessive costs. You should read this. I disagree with giving power to the city. Counsel regarding tuition reimbursement, if the council chooses not to allocate the funds necessary to continue the program in any particular fiscal year due to any budget constraints, we have to see how the priority is not, we must see how, we don't have a priority for our employees, but for that golf course tax abatement and incentives that I was saying. I also disagree with the work week full-time of non-safety employees continuing to be on furloughs. Ten percent of their work time that has resulted in thirty-six hour work weeks and a loss of ten percent in compensation. I disagree with this golf fund clearly, and with these items that are, that have been packed.
Madam Mayor, I do have comments?
Thank you. So, just so that the record is clear, I reviewed the budget quite extensively, did not find anything to be out of order on this. The types of things that our city manager participates in are typical to city managers across the state, including a salary and the other benefits and things that are offered to him in order to carry out the work that he has before him. As far as my taking a blind eye to any of the numbers and representations in the budget presented to the community, well, that is just patently false. I work very faithfully to make sure that I'm making decisions that are wise and discerning and in the best interests of our community. It's not in my nature to take a blind eye to any business of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. I won't even attempt to defend myself because it's useless, and we have a conflict here immediately.
Madam Mayor, I, because we're dealing with the budget item, there was certainly one, one comment that Ms. Gomez made that's just patently wrong, grossly overstated, especially when she was identified. She had had identified myself as receiving sixteen thousand dollars a month for travel. I do not receive sixteen thousand dollars a month for travel. My best guess that she, I mean, trying to assume what she was meaning, there might be sixteen thousand dollars for my entire departmental budget for the year, but certainly my contract does not provide, nor does the city compensate me sixteen thousand dollars a month for travel.
Thank you for clarifying that. She should do a little more research before she starts accusing-
Page twenty-nine, it says CM, which is city manager, and it says travel and meetings, and it says sixteen thousand. If you want to interpret it just like I did, that's why we have clarification from administration. But when I don't have, I can't sit with them because they don't want to sit with me to clarify, I got to put it out there for all of us to know why this is happening, right?
Can we continue with our meeting?
And again, Madam Mayor, just so that the public is clear, what Councilmember Gomez is pointing to is actually speaking to the department, not an individual. There is a department called the city manager's department here in the organization, so that is actually a line item dealing with the annual expense, budget expense for the department.
Thank you. She just doesn't understand. Okay, we will continue on.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes with Ramirez being absent and Gomez voting no.
Now we move on to consent calendar. And consent calendar, Items C one through C eight may be approved with one motion unless a council member requests an item to be pulled for further discussion.
I'm pulling Items C two, C four, and C eight.
C two and what?
Two, four, eight.
Four, and nine.
Madam Mayor, I have none to pull.
I'm sorry, Ms. Jones?
Thank you. I have none to pull. Thank you.
I don't have any to pull. On that basis, I move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of C two, C four, and C eight.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Ramirez being absent.
So for Item C two, which is Title two and Title sixteen, Title sixteen and Chapter five, that's resolutions twenty-three eighty-eight and twenty-three eighty-nine. My question is, who is the Director of Development currently? Was the Director of Development, of Development not doing his or her job? And to whose standard? And who suggested to replace the Director of Development with the city manager?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, this item involves a second reading of an ordinance, and in fact, at the very last meeting, we had some discussion regarding this, largely talking about the accessory use, changes to the municipal code in Title sixteen. We also identified how we took the opportunity to try to conform to that state law in cleaning up that particular code. We also cleaned up other code sections. And there was routinely throughout Title sixteen, reference to a position called the Development Director. We did reorganize about a year ago, some of the leadership and executive management structure of the organization. And in doing so, the Director of Development position effectively was eliminated. The roles and responsibilities got rolled into that of a newly created Deputy City Manager position. But for the sake of making this simple going forward, and so as to also not circumvent the city manager's authority in some of the duties and responsibilities provided in Title sixteen, we cleaned up this title. We were recommending, and the council approved at the last meeting, the cleaning up of the reference to the Development Code to become reference to the city manager.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, now, my questions are done, but now this is my comment. I'm very concerned about any manager giving himself more power to harass the public by displaying himself as code enforcement. I also worry about any manager giving himself the power to become the zoning administrator to approve land zones that don't go to the planning commissioners. This change in Title sixteen, Chapter six, code enforcement under Title one, administration and code enforcement takes the power away from the Director of Development to add himself forcefully to select and harass our community members. I personally have experienced code enforcement harassing my home and selectively receiving emails from former council member Ryan McCackren, by the way, the gym partner to Keith Mesler at In Shape, who have used his particular titles to harass the owners of the property where I'm currently residing today. I would be remiss if I did not put this type of behavior out in the open. Just this last election, we had candidate applicants running for office who faced the same antagonistic approach from our code, from our code enforcement division under Title sixteen, Development Code, Chapter six, Article three, five, under Article twenty-three, Chapter four, et cetera. This is very concerning to me. I ask that any public person who has, who has a visit from code enforcement-
You have thirty seconds.
-you can always reach out to me at seven sixty-nine twelve thirty-one ninety, again, seven sixty-nine twelve thirty-one ninety, and I will continue to oversee the people's right despite continual opposition from this council and its, and its administration.
Madam Mayor, a question to the city manager. Did you usurp the powers of the planning commission on zoning matters and zone changes?
No. I should also mention, and I failed to mention in my earlier description of this matter, it does identify the city manager as replacing the Development Director's previous position of authority. But it also provides for the city manager to delegate a designee. So as to the concern about potential use of harassment, which is, I think, fairly extreme, there's no mention of that in this code. The designated individual responsible is the Deputy City Manager. That's a delegation that I have made. But so that there's an ultimate responsibility, the city manager's title is what's been placed in the code.
It's, it's very common for the city council to hire a city manager and hire the city attorney. And it's very common for the city manager to be able to delegate, hire the department heads. The city council is not involved in that. And, but if there are problems that people are having, I'd like to know about it too. And the other thing, in regard to harassment, that's extremely serious charge. I'd like the council to approve, referring that matter directly to the attorney for an investigation to determine if such thing is existing, and if so, bring it back to the city council. If not, the city council needs to know also. I've been around a long time, and I have no one contacting me about the city staff or the manager or anyone harassing anyone. Sorry, but I don't know what you're talking about, Ms. Gomez, so, but that's serious.
It's a serious charge. So do we want to make a motion, and we want to name her as being the accuser here of charges?
Are you going to be displaying the names? Because so far, it's considered anonymous, whoever is harassing me with code enforcement. But it's already been revealed, so we know is Erin McCackren, the former Hawaii unseated, that has really good control and really good communications with code enforcement. And you have been here for a long time. You were the city manager for over three decades. You went over two years for Apple Valley, managed over there, or here, our city attorney for thirty years. You can see the loyalties. Will there be any justice if there's investigation within internally? Of course, there wouldn't.
What's that got to do with harassment?
Would you want, would you want to do an external investigation so that it is not held within?
If we need to, well, absolutely.
Well, that's a good motion that we could make, right? Something external, so we don't have people from within doing the investigation, but it's external.
We will investigate the council also.
I agree. I would, I would agree to that motion for someone externally to come in that's not dependent from anybody here, and we do that.
But we want the council also to be investigated.
Yeah, of course.
Thoroughly.
Yeah, you too.
Of course.
Yeah. So I would, actually, I'm for that motion. I actually make that motion.
Well, this, you made the charge of harassment, and therefore, I want the investigation. I'm going to second it because I want, and I have not, I listened to you carefully, and I have no idea what you were saying about Councilman McCackren, who's not on the council, is not here, has nothing to do with the operations of the city. I'd like a city clerk to provide a, just a short printout of that, so we can understand what that was about. So, these are, we make charges against private citizens. I don't want this council to end up in a lawsuit because it's not our charge. Investigate it, make a determination as basis to it. We have a responsibility to do something, and if there's not, we have the responsibility probably to apologize to McCackren.
No, to stop, to not continue it.
You can make charges, you just stop. You got to have some basis for it. You can't just make charges.
Yeah, as soon as you tell code enforcement to release the anonymity for that, we will have it. You can see the emails revealed.
Mayor Gomez, if I might, Mayor Gomez, Mayor Garcia, sorry about that. If I might, I believe that Mr. Cox's motion was to have me do the investigation initially. I believe what Ms. Gomez is suggesting is a modification of that. So we should have a discussion first on the modification of the motion and see if there's a second. And I believe her motion was to have an external investigation. So I believe that is before the council right now.
The motion was made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Hold on. So this, the modification is to use an outside agency. I don't recall-
That is correct.
-having heard a second on that.
I have not heard a second.
I thought we were inviting a second.
He seconded it when he agreed.
Councilmember, okay, all right. For an outside agency.
Perhaps we should go back again.
Yeah, you go back.
And the motion that I understand it from Councilmember Gomez is to have an external investigation on allegations of harassment.
Was there a second on that?
I don't.
Okay. Then there'd be-
You changed your mind?
No, no, no. I don't understand it that way at all.
Okay.
Ms. Gomez made accusations.
Yes.
I made the recommendation that the city attorney do an investigation.
Right.
That was my motion.
Right.
As I understand it, I don't know if there was a second or not, but I thought, I thought Ms. Gomez seconded it. She wants to have an outside agency. I may be for that, depending upon what we find out, but not at this point. That's hiring money, going out, and we don't even know if there's any basis for the complaint at this point.
So I'll take the modified motion from Ms. Gomez.
I did not second the modified motion.
Okay. Is there a second? There being no second, that motion dies.
We should go back to-
Internal.
Councilmember Cox's motion to have an internal investigation, and we're looking for a second on that.
That is my motion.
Second.
Are you going to be providing all the documents so it's, everybody can see the documentation and your type of investigation? Is that correct?
That's typically what an investigation provides, yes.
Is there a second? I second.
Oh, you did?
The motion being by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I was an aye on that, thank you.
Excuse me?
I was an aye.
Okay. Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
So C four is satisfaction and release of lien for the Green Tree House area. So I've read the discussion report, the resolution on the lien release. Please provide information from nineteen seventy-three and nineteen seventy-four, how the process to satisfy this lien took over three decades ago. If you don't mind, please explain to the city council how the reimbursement to the city through the assessment function in the Green Tree House area.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this item, to the best of my knowledge, is just a simple oversight. The satisfaction and release of lien is something that traditionally gets recorded against property to remove, I guess, the security related to improvements. Brian, you're going to have to help me with this, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
This is something that's very routine. Back in nineteen seventy-three, there was an assessment district established that affected these properties in this area. And the assessment district was to fund the installation of curb gutter, sidewalk, and so forth. So when an assessment district is formed, those payments are put on the tax for all the properties pay for a certain time period, and then after the, all the payments are made over a certain number of years, basically, the assessment district is no longer in effect. And so, this was fully paid off. What happens, though, is there will be liens recorded on a property. The tax assessor recognizes that there was an assessment on the property. So it's just simply a cleanup item, just to take these liens off the property, so that if they release or sell them, they're clear of the lien. It's very- or sell them, they're clear of the lien. It's very routine.
Thank you. And then finally, for item C8, this is receive and file the Economic Development SCLA January through December 2018 Activity Report. When was the last time, besides this one, when an activity report was created for the Economic Development SCLA? The second question is, has cities secured permits and required processes to announce the upcoming Dunia Plaza organizations, or the properties that are going to be coming forth? Those are my two questions.
Mayor and council, the last time the Economic Development and SCLA Activity Report was done was for 2017 activity. It was done in early 2018, similar to this item. It's been presented early in 2019 to summarize all 2018 activity. I think the question was whether or not the permits had been pulled or permit applications received for the project mentioned in the staff report in Dunia Plaza. The project has received entitlement through the planning commission, but I'm not aware that any permits have been pulled yet.
The reason I ask, because I know when Cracker Barrel came, we weren't supposed to display, so I wasn't sure if there's certain processes before they're talked about, because the community is asking, when is El Superior going to be here, or something like that. And so when I see things like this that the development organization is working on, I'm wondering if it's through the permitting process that we get every month, you know, how is that functioning?
So as mentioned in the staff report, the economic development team actually sits in in-person meetings with projects that are looking to locate to the city. So they sit in the meetings and try to attract those businesses to the city. That's how they become aware of them. It's not necessarily that they've pulled a permit yet.
Okay. All right, thank you. So for item C2, if we can also piecemeal it, for C2, different vote, because it's not the same vote for C2, 4, and 8. So I make a motion to approve items C4 and C8, as recommended by staff.
I'll second that with the caveat that on C8, it requires a vote also by the Board of Directors of SCLA.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Ramirez being absent.
So what happened to C2?
We now, we're taking a motion on that one now.
I'd like to have an explanation on why it wasn't included with C4 and C8. They were all discussed at the same time.
Because my vote is not the same.
Okay. Move, we approve item C2.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent and Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now we move on to written communications. Item D1, initiate proceedings to annex track 14499, ALMAD 6. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council adopt Resolution Number 19-013 to initiate proceedings to annex track number 14499 to ALMAD 6, detach track number 14499 from ALMAD 1, and direct the preparation of an engineer's report.
Thank you. I'll ask council members if they have any questions of staff. I'll start with Councilmember Cox.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
None, thank you.
Gomez?
Yes, so item D1, it's the annexation for tracks 14499 to ALMAD 6, detach track to 14499 from ALMAD 1, Resolution 19-013. So ALMAD 1 will take four council meetings to come to completion. So by June 8, 2019, would that be the last meeting and today the first of four meetings?
It would be the first of three meetings. It'll take three meetings and four resolutions. The last one will be in June.
Okay, and there are sixty properties, and thirty-seven of the sixty properties agree to the supposed report because there's signatures. When I walked the entire ALMAD 1, I ran into a lot of renters. How many of those signatures that are from property owners? Did we verify and did the city verify, or are we assuming that the thirty-seven people that are four coming from ALMAD 1 to ALMAD 6 are actually the property owners? Also, I also ran into property owners who live in their homes for over twenty years, and a lot of them were seniors on a fixed income. They were concerned that their property tax would go from twenty dollars to their first year going to one eighty-two, and thereafter a hundred and forty-four dollars. So that hike kind of blew them, you know, like, if they're on a fixed income, this is not fair. Sixty homes will see their property bill go from twenty to one eighty-two in the first year alone. Did the city of Victorville look to other options for the benefit of the public in assessment districts, specifically today for ALMAD 1? What are the clarified procedures that are applicable for living new or increased assessments?
So the thirty-seven are property owners, and I just want to point out that it'll go to, a ballot will be sent to all sixty property owners, so all property owners will get a chance to vote on this issue. We looked at all kinds of alternatives. The bottom line is, they need increased revenues to be able to support the landscaping to what they're used to and what the city's standards are, and to what the neighboring communities have up and down Ridgecrest Road. So this only applies to one specific area, not the entire ALMAD 1.
Thank you. No further questions.
Madam Mayor, if I might, just to identify kind of how this item got here, this is not something that we, as the city, just placed on here in hope that the property owners vote to detach and annex into ALMAD 6. What we've received thus far has been petitions, where you actually have the property owners themselves petitioning the city, saying, "We want to detach from the current ALMAD that they're in and attach into another ALMAD." And I believe largely the reason is because this particular ALMAD is sandwiched in between two of the other ALMADs that are healthier from a fiscal perspective. And so you can visibly see, especially if you're living in that neighborhood, the difference in how one area is maintained versus the other. So because of that, it's my understanding that the property owners have signed petitions effectively asking the city to start this process. So effectively, if the council is in concurrence, tonight would be the first step to initiate the proceedings and order an engineer's report. The city engineer would then be required to put together that engineer's report and bring it back at another meeting, and presuming the council approves that, then the council could order the actual election. And that's where we would then mail out the ballots to all of the affected property owners. And presuming a majority of those properties, I'm sorry, presuming a majority of the respondents to the vote, or to the ballot, votes in the affirmative, then the detachment and annexation occurs.
Thank you for that clarification.
What I didn't get a response is 218 Prop. How do individuals fight this if that's their choosing? I know, as a city, we have the ultimate authority to say yes or no, but the voice of the people with 218, and I didn't want to say Prop 218, but I had to, because I need people to know that there's an option if they don't want that. Because for the water, it was the same issue. Out of about thirty-two thousand homes, only sixty-eight people said, "We don't want our water rates to go up." They were angry and upset. And I said, "What does 218 say? How do people get together to fight an increase in water?" And the same thing would be for these sixty homes. If they decide that council shouldn't have the overarching element, how do those people come together if that's what they want to do? It's just an option for the people.
And Madam Mayor, I'd answer that by saying that's exactly what this process does. It actually puts a vote out to the people. This is not city-initiated. This is private owner-initiated. And notwithstanding that, the ballots will go out to the property owners, and if they're opposed to this, then they would vote no.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have a few comments, if I may. I don't have questions, but if you're ready to take comments.
You don't have any questions of staff?
I don't at this time.
Okay, we'll wait for your comment, then. I do not have any speaker cards at this time. So I need a motion to adopt Resolution 19...
I move that the council adopt the resolutions as recommended by the staff, Resolution Number 19-013.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I can't even begin to tell my colleagues how proud I am of our community for wanting to take the first steps to beautify their neighborhood. This is something that people, just generally in the high desert, certainly in Victorville, have been crying out for, that we do something to improve the way our community looks. These types of things, increase property values, attract business, et cetera. So these thirty-seven people who signed a petition, I am so proud of them. They are a prime example of what it means to take control of your city and do what is needed to make it a good place to live in and a place that we can proudly call home. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
I also have a comment. Not in good conscience, can I vote when I have a selected amount of individuals who are not aware of what can happen? So I laud Mrs. Jones's idea of beautification, but I also want to give back the power to the people for them to at least realize that they have an option, whether they want to go for it or not go for it. I think it's always going to the people. As I said, I will continue, and I will walk and make individuals aware of what's happening, because I know we're not marketing it. And so at least people understand, if this does go up, you know, you had an option, if you wanted to voice your opinion or not. That's something that I will always push for when it comes to community and individual leaders and individual community members, to understand what we, as a group of five, can do to empower you.
Madam Mayor, I believe I have a little more time. Thank you. So I just want to make this very clear. All of those residents will be notified by mail of the procedure and what could potentially take place, correct? So that is not a marketing campaign, per se, but it is our, doing our due diligence to make sure our community is informed, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. You understood completely.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Ramirez being absent and Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now we move on to item D2, request to approve mutual aid agreement with Bureau of Land Management, California Desert District. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve a mutual aid agreement with the Bureau of Land Management, California Desert District, with zero financial impact, and authorize the city manager or his designee to execute said agreements.
Thank you. Council members, any questions of staff? I'll start with Councilmember Jones.
None, thank you.
Mr. Cox?
No questions.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes, so for the chief captain, does the city of Victorville have plans in place when a disaster or fire occurs in that area that relates to emergencies that are restricted with mutual aid from providing supplemental assistance because resources aren't available? So in other words, I was looking at some of the zoning. I don't have a map, though, and it's restricted to a specific zone, and it's only where there is wildfires. But if there were to happen, in my opinion, something major disaster, and we want mutual aid, but they're busy taking care of theirs, do we have a plan in place? Are we thinking about something that can come, something that if there is a threat, that we would still be covered despite the fact we're having overlaps, not just of one BLMCCDD? Multiple overlaps, not just one.
Madam Mayor and council, I think the answer to that is, that is why we are establishing multiple mutual aid agreements, so that we have that overlap. In this particular case, the Bureau of Land Management has property on the northern border of the city, so we would then be able to utilize them as a cooperator if we have an event in the river bottom or going north from the river bottom.
So then we're going to have more than the BLMCCDD, right? We're going to have someone else in case they weren't, they were not able to assist us. That's what my question was. And you said there's multiple, so I'm assuming there's more than us, too. There's probably a third one.
Well, if you recall, in previous meetings, you've approved a mutual aid agreement with Apple Valley, also with Cal Fire.
Yeah, so I don't know if Apple Valley would cover that mutual aid zone, and I don't know if the other one would, too. I mean, you know best. There's so many items. So for me to try to know if all these were the same area overlap, I don't know if there's a specific measure. But if you're saying yes, that was just my question. I appreciate your response.
Yep.
No further questions.
Did you have something, Jim?
No, I do not.
I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion and a second.
I saw move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Item D3, amendment to contract with HR Green Pacific, Inc. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve Amendment Number 4 to increase the contract with HR Green Pacific Incorporated by a hundred thousand dollars from General Fund 100 to continue on-call and map-checking services.
Thank you. Any questions of council, of staff from council members? Ms. Jones?
None, thank you.
I don't have any questions.
Gomez?
So this contract is with HR Green Pacific. My question is, this contract is the Fourth Amendment. Is the Fourth Amendment done every six months approximately? It looks, from my interpretation of the reading, it might be. The cost for the first half was ninety-seven thousand, and the anticipated second half is about a hundred grand, which would be about two hundred thousand dollars, to outsource the map-checking and the engineer-planning. How much would it cost the city to hire employees to do the same job in-house, and would that option not augment the engineering department? And has the city looked into such exploration? Another question is, in the last five years, the city has needed in-house augmentation to timely review private development projects. To the public, doesn't it make sense that if sixty-five percent goes to the consultant of what the city revenues, that it be that we start employing locally, which means in-house? And what gives the mayor the authority to sign this agreement?
Well, to answer your first question, the amendments are done as necessary. There's not necessarily a six-month timeframe. So we have amended the agreement just to cover the anticipated expenses for the on-call plan check contract. And I don't have an analysis that I can share with comparing the contract services versus hiring in-house employees. But the reason we have this on-call contract is because the development activity can vary from month to month, from year to year, depending on the number of plans or maps we check. So the idea was that with this on-call contract, we can handle the variable workflow without having to hire more in-house staff. So our thought process there was, we can be more responsive to the development community, and at the same time, we're able to control our costs and adjust them accordingly along with the plan check activities. So that was the idea with the on-call contract.
Okay, and just, there's going to be, for the D4 item, and you said to adjust our costs, just remember that, because I'll be touching on cost on the next one. I think they're sort of related. Thank you.
I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion.
Move approval of staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Item D4, amendment to contract with Inner West Consulting Group. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve Amendment Number 2 to increase the Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement with Inner Rest Consulting Group by one hundred seventy-one thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars, for a total of two hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars for engineering development review services.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by council members?
Yes, Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. All right, so I'll throw this to you, Mr. Metzler, and you can hand it off to whoever you wish. So am I to assume that the rationale for hiring an outside consulting group on this would be the same as the reply that we got in item D three, that there are benefits to hiring an outside consulting agency?
There is. This one-
Under certain circumstances.
Correct. That is correct. This has a little bit of added element to it. This was a position because it requires a P E license, which is an engineering license. This was a full-time position up until about, oh, maybe a year ago now. And we'd actually had trouble filling this position with an F T, or I'm sorry, a full-time equivalent. So it's a fairly critical position to help manage the flow of the engineering side of private development. So having had trouble filling this position permanently, we then resorted to contracting for services. So this is an individual through a firm that provides the services that we're looking for. We just can't find them on a full-time basis as of yet.
Okay, and then two follow-up questions on that. So because this is a not-to-exceed kind of a situation, so we can modify this as we, as the demand suits it, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And then is there any anticipation of reflying that position that was originally unsuccessful?
We will. It's certainly a position that we envision long-term needing to be satisfied by a full-time equivalent. But at this point in time, we're actually just in the early stages of the relationship with this contract provider. So those discussions haven't been something that we've been discussing today, but it's something we may revisit at a later time.
Okay, and then also I noticed on page two fifty-one, it says this not-to-exceed fee is based on both positions providing services on a full-time schedule, et cetera, from March first, two thousand nineteen, through June thirty, two thousand nineteen. So today is March nineteenth. Has this already become in effect in some manner? Is it already being executed?
Yeah, my understanding is that we have already executed this contract. We executed it using my purchasing authority after having gone out through a competitive selection process. So my understanding is the reason why it's coming back to this council is that it's gotten to the threshold to where it's about to exceed my purchasing authority and we're effectively supplementing. I should add, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, we brought this contract firm on principally for the development, engineering development manager position, but I believe we're also adding services to include construction inspection as well.
That is correct. We had a previous contract or have a previous contract with another firm. But instead of using that contract inspector, now we're using a contract inspector with Inner West. So in essence, that inspector was swapped out with a different firm. So that inspection position was added to this contract.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Jim, did you have anything?
I don't have any questions.
Gomez?
So my previous question was what gave the mayor the authority to sign the contract? Because this one does not have the mayor's authority. It has the City Manager and they're both consulting firms. So my question was not answered previously, and they need to because I need to understand why the mayor has authority over one, but then the City Manager has authority over something that, to me, looks very similar, just difference in money terms. So I'll ask my questions for this one item. Remind me, please?
So-
Item D-
Well, the initial contract-
Oh, I'm sorry. I need to look for my questions. Is it D four?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So this item deals with engineering development review services. What gives the City Manager the authority to sign the agreement consulting services and not the mayor? If you see the former item, the mayor has the authority, but this one, the mayor is not presented as the authority figure to validate the agreement. Why? Does the engineering development review services also do engineering plan and map checking? Why are we using multiple services when they can be a single consultant? Is there a process that the city must follow and would it not have been cost-effective if we had combined the services of item D three and D four into one? What about the employee option of hiring within the department? And looking at the mid-year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen table of organization effective March nineteen, twenty nineteen, the city engineer makes between ten thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and twelve thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars monthly, which calculates at approximately between seventy-two to eighty-eight dollars an hour at a thirty-six hour a week, losing the ten percent compensation. Whereas Inner West-
You have thirty seconds?
Costs estimates and rate sheets show hourly billing rates for classification of engineering between eighty-five and a hundred and forty-five dollars an hour. Is there a reason why we're not hiring and instead we're outsourced, and instead we are outsourcing?
Okay, so to answer your first question about the contract authority, the Inner West contract was first approved under the City Manager's authority and the purchasing code, which is a limit of fifty thousand dollars. So that contract was initiated. Now we're approaching the threshold of the fifty thousand dollar expense. So to continue with the contract to increase it through the end of the fiscal year, we need to gain City Council approval because that would exceed the City Manager's fifty thousand dollar authority. So that means the amendment to the contract would have to be approved by the mayor because it exceeds that expense limit. So that's why it was started initially with the City Manager. To get back to your question about why we are not using one firm for both the plan check services and also this company providing development review and inspection services, they're two completely different things. The plan check services are a different function than the development review. That position oversees the whole development review process from beginning to end. That person is a registered engineer and the inspection services could be provided by a number of companies. But in this case, Inner West was most responsive to our needs and that's why we're contracting with them. To get back to your question about the in-house positions versus the contract positions, it's true that the hourly rate for contract positions are higher. Typically, when you have a consulting firm, their hourly rate has a multiplier that is going to be a higher rate than your in-house expenses with salary and benefits. But again, this decision was made because if there is a slack in development, we could just terminate the contract and we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have to lay anybody off. We can be more responsive to the variable workload with development. You can hire more in-house positions, and if we think that that's sustainable and we would keep that person for a minimal workload, that would make sense. But in this particular case, at this particular time, we feel like it better meets the needs of the city to contract this out.
Do you have any other questions?
No further questions.
Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendation posted on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Now we move on to item D five. This is discussion only regarding the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance for acquisition of right-of-ways. The recommendation is any action is at the discretion of the City Council. I believe this was agendized by Councilmember Cox.
I made the request, the request to agendize this matter. And I knew it was going to turn into a pretty lengthy project because of the, you have to look at the nineteen eleven Act, nineteen thirteen Act, nineteen fifteen Act, the assessments. Two of them you tie together. If there's going to be bonded improvements, I don't anticipate that. What I do anticipate is that if we have right-of-ways that are needed, we need to be able to have a one-year and probably a five-year capital improvement plan and start acquiring properties on the basis that is actually possible for property owners to move a project up by the property owners signing a petition requesting an assessment district. And the assessment district that I am proposing, that we'll discuss when it comes to a full discussion, is that in exchange for giving up the right-of-way, that they in fact then would get the improvements of equal value or maybe more without having to hire a person to acquire the property, go through the appraisals. It ends up very expensive to do that. And we also have a couple of known property acquisitions by individuals simply looking at capital improvement plan and looking at the City Council's action and then rushing out and buying the property in front of that simply to increase the value of the property. Fact is, when the city puts in street improvements, whether it be water sewer, curb gutter, it doesn't make any difference. It enhances the property, whether it's commercial or residential, it makes it more valuable. And in many instances, where we run into a problem, we only have a limited amount of money, where we run into a problem putting the right-of-way in. At least the experience has been in other cities and here in the past is that property owners will actually initiate that assessment district to get that project moved up in their area. Especially if they have, if it involves streets and the horrible conditions of streets. Otherwise, we simply wait until the project comes around and then go through a long process of acquiring right-of-way and the appraisal. It's very expensive. So I wanted it for a full discussion, but you can't have that kind of a discussion unless you actually have the state law in front of you with a staff analysis on each one. And it's going to be a little more involved than than I think staff thought about and me, too, actually. But so I ask that if they can't provide all that information prior to the discussion by the City Council, that they continue this matter until they can put that together. My understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff, since the City Council authorized this for a discussion item, staff is actually working on that and has been working on it. They're just not ready yet. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
So at this time, there is no action. So do we continue this?
Councilmember Cox, would you like to make that as a motion to continue this?
Well, yes, yes. I don't want this taken off the agenda, so I would make a motion that we continue this discussion. Hopefully by the next meeting, but even if isn't, be prepared to continue it again because I think the staff will want, or the council will want the information and they will want to be able to study it before we can enter into a real, full, meaningful discussion. And I've already gotten inquiry from general public who, somebody told them we were going to come and tear out their block walls and front yards, which is absolute nonsense, but it always starts. There's always those individuals. So need the information. My motion, continue this until staff is prepared with all the information, but hopefully as soon as possible within the next one or two council meetings.
I second that.
And I would venture out to say that I would modify what you just stated to ask that the analysis that the analysis be as unbiased as possible, where the pros and the cons are listed equally and not to unconsciously embed that bias, because I know I could definitely read through through something like that in a reporting or an analysis. So if you add a balance to pros and cons, that would really allow the assessment to be able to understand what is in it for the city and what is it for the property owner. The other thing that I wanted to do is would the city staff provide hard copies of all pertinent ordinances that are related to the acquisitions of right-of-way in the council's box? I don't know if we currently have any ordinances. Perhaps we don't, listening to Councilmember Cox. We are working towards an ordinance and I'm just answering myself based on what I heard him say, but of course I'm interpreting those words. Is there?
I'm sorry.
Do we have ordinances in place right now?
We do have ordinances in place.
There has to be.
Okay, so it would be, I know you said there's acts in nineteen eleven, nineteen fifteen.
If I can answer, we've been in executive session over and over and over on road projects for the acquisition of right-of-way. We are following state law and current ordinances now and have been. What this does is provide a different method of acquiring right-of-ways and I think that once, I think once you see the copy of the assessment districts, this is the state law. It's under the Streets and Highways Code of how a city may proceed to acquire a right-of-way. And I think once the City Council reads that and has a staff explanation, there will be a lot of questions, I'm sure. But I think that we actually have to have an analysis of nineteen eleven, thirteen, and fifteen acts, but they're very lengthy. Any council member wants a complete copy, I think it should be provided. I don't need it. I've read it dozens of times, but if any council member wants to see it, then fine.
So there's a modification by Councilmember Gomez. Is there a second?
I want to be clear because is this being presented as an amendment or a substitute motion? Because it sounds like it's just an amendment.
It sounded to me like it was an amendment to the motion. Mr. Cox's motion was to have staff-
Right.
-present the item as soon as they are ready to present it. My understanding of Councilmember Gomez's substitute, or sorry, modification was that any analysis include an analysis, unbiased analysis of the pros and cons.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
So it's back to Councilmember Cox's motion to have staff bring this back as soon as possible.
I'm just confident-
And I had already seconded that.
Correct.
They will be unbiased in their analysis.
Correct.
However, that's not a part of the motion, so you can just ignore that part. You're just going to do what you usually do. And that's why, that's why I added that portion, because I want to see as a community, a pro and con. Because we're not all engineers here and experts, so it really, the public doesn't have access to administration the way perhaps four of you do. And so it's me trying to understand that I want the community to be involved, and so that's why I stated that. So if you want to reject that and say, but do this, I'm just hoping that they listen to you. That's all I'm saying. Because it's one thing to make a motion and it's another one to say, but this is what I want despite the fact that I didn't put this in there. But I just wanted to say that, so you already made your motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Item D six, discussion regarding Councilmember term limits. Any action is at the discretion of the City Council. I do have one card, Romero Rodriguez.
I think that's very justified, leaving the S out of that wording up there. I pretty much know who it's directed as. At the last meeting, I saw a pretty loud argument, a heated argument about people being up there for generations. And one of the recommendations was limiting it to just only one term, which is fine. You get the person out that you don't want and then next elections, or next meeting, you rescind that. And so that person's out and then you have the open term limits again. Thing is, it's, you have to respect, understand, everybody has different views and different values and sees things differently. Some of the council members say that they feel they're the ones that should be making all the decisions for us because we elected them. Other members say they should, we should be the ones that have the last word because we voted them in. And while I respect, they see, they see it that way, but to bring this up and just on a heated argument, what other things are brought up just in the heat of the moment? It's very important that we have someone that represents us, especially the Hispanic community, since we're invisible in all the census and all the demographics here and in California, us being finally the majority since two thousand fourteen. But we're not included in the census. I don't know what's going to happen in two thousand twenty. I'm not white. I'm Hispanic, but I'm not included. And for that reason, it's very important that we maintain our civility. I know it gets heated up there, but really, limiting term limits to just one member only? but really? Limiting term limits to just one member only? That, to me, is not, is very unfair, especially to us, the voters that have that person representing us. Thank you very much.
Maggie Martin.
Good evening, Your Honor, counsel. You know, in the few years now, four years that I've been coming to council roughly, what I've learned amongst other things is, when you have a new person come on board, such as Ms. Gomez in 2016, it takes a while to get up to speed. That said, much as I hate to say it, I have to be honest about it, I think a two-term limit is good. Otherwise, if it was up to me because of her, I'd be like, get this person out, which I'm confident will happen in 2020 anyway. But I'd be like, get rid of them. It's bad news. But I think it's only fair to allow somebody who might be brand new to the council to, and not experienced, have an opportunity to get fully on board. Thank you.
That was the last card that I had. So, discussion. I'll start with Ms. Jones.
Well, I think, I'm not sure if it was councilmember Cox or Gomez that brought this issue up, so I don't know if they want to tee it up before we...
If you allowed her to speak, I don't see why she couldn't speak.
I'm asking you to speak.
Well, you gave her the floor.
I'm asking you to speak.
I'm going to wait. Did you want to say something, or did you want me?
No, I just proceeded.
Unless, I'll move this, we just delay this. I mean, you brought it up, you wanted to talk about it. I seconded it, so you could talk about it.
When we are. The thing is, the mayor allowed Mrs. Jones, and Mrs. Jones said, I, and I referred back to if that's what the mayor wanted to do. So I want to make sure Mrs. Jones is in agreement.
Thank you, councilmember Gomez. I appreciate it. But traditionally, when an item is requested by a council member, that council member has the opportunity to tee up the item.
I mistake. You are correct.
Yeah, we've not practiced that, so I appreciate that you're bringing that into light today. I appreciate it.
That was my mistake.
So, yeah, so I had a question here to the city attorney. Would you write up a formal opinion of how the local municipalities may address this matter? Because it's not just up to us. I know that we have advisory votes, and then we have presidential elections, and then we set it out to the people, and the people do the term limits, just like if people would like us to be individually elected by districts versus at large. That had to be thrown out to the public in an actual election term. It's not like the five people can say, this is what I'm going to do, even though you see that a lot here. It's just a power play. It's an advantage of if someone is ignorant into some rules or regulations, it's like a tactic to really intimidate or cause fear. And so I want to understand formally with law, what is it that we can actually do? Because it's not just, I'm sure this is not a municipal affair. This is governed by state law. And we don't have anything that shows us here how it's governed so that we can take those approaches. So like Mr. Cox said, right now, it's only up for discussion. And so I wanted to see, are there any laws, processes, any statutes that address the enactment of such limits? I'd like to see any state and federal laws that govern these term limits. Like I said, it's not whatever we want to do here, even though it almost seems all the time like that's how it is, but there isn't. There's administrative law, case law. Even though we're a charter city, this is not a municipal affair. There's a lot of state law behind it, but we don't have any discussion in terms, we just basically have a one sheet submitted that says, discussion regarding councilmember term limits. And the discussion says, on March 5th, council unanimously voted to agendize discussion of term limits, and accordingly, it's being presented. So there's nothing here. So you would say, well, what can we talk when we haven't read something that would allow us, well, state law allows us to do this. Let's implement an election during the presidential election, and let's go ahead and start approving it right now so that during the presidential election, we have term limits, and the people are actually going to vote for it, and they have their say. I asked a question for the city attorney, but he's quiet.
I believe it'd be for the council to direct me to do that type of research, if you wanted that, but it's up to the council at this point to have a discussion.
Well, for clarification, Ms. Gomez mentioned election by districts. Were you wanting term, thinking term limits with districts, or term limits with at large, or I didn't understand the purpose of that?
The purpose of that was to show that things have to go out to the general public, to the electorate, so that they vote what they want to happen at the city council, whether it's we continue to be at large, or we're going to be by districts. But today, we're not discussing that. But that was in order to show how five council members or three can't just say, we want to do term limits. Okay, this person is out. Now let's reinstate. We're going to be here for eternity's sake, and we'll be the next generation of dinosaurs. Can't do that. There's, like I said, there is state law that backs up all of this. It's not a municipal affair. And when I asked the city manager, I mean, the city attorney, to be able to weigh in, you'll see he refers back, well, what is it that the entire council says? But when you see one council member address, you don't see that feedback as, well, the entire council needs to. And so these are the performances that you're seeing above and beyond. And that's why I need to make sure I go back. A lot of people are new here. And I have to bring you back as to two years ago, what's been happening. That's what I was doing, relaying.
Well, first of all, it's terrifying that the charter city, we did go to an election in regard, does the public want to amend the charter and have election by districts? They overwhelmingly said no. That decision has been made, and that's made by the electorate. So that's settled. And so the question that we have before us is, does the city council want to have term limits? And you raised the question, and I wanted to hear what you had to say about it.
We're waiting to hear from her.
Didn't you just hear I spoke, was my three minutes up, I think? Because I did speak for about three minutes. And I did tell you that staff didn't provide anything for all of us. And I'm not just going to pull stuff out of thin air when we have a city attorney who can provide the information. I'm not the city attorney. I'm not the expert.
My understanding is the request last time was just to have this on for a discussion at the council level to see if you want to even explore term limits.
That is correct. It was just discussion. It had nothing to do with staff, so don't put the blame on the staff.
Staff is here to serve the community, and we need resources. And if they have the power and the expertise, I lay it back on them.
That was not what you agendized.
That's what they're here for, to serve the community. So...
You know, I think that...
No, Mrs. Martin, that's the first time you're outspoken. That's your first time. And I'm going to, for the record, going to say every time this woman speaks, she does not get the attention of the decorum, and she does not get shut down. So that's the first time, and I'm always going to publicize it. So if anybody else outspoken and you see a direction, you start seeing the bipartisanship.
Yes, any?
That's the second time, Mrs. Martin. That's the third time you're speaking.
I demand that you take charge of this meeting.
Well, I am. Maggie, you have to remove yourself. And Ms. Gomez, if you don't refrain yourself, you will be removed also.
I can't be removed. I'm part of representing the city. Don't show your partisanship. It doesn't help to do that.
Oh, really?
So, Madam Mayor, if I may, it seems to me that there's a little bit of nuance to this, so I can understand councilmember Gomez's comments. But this is, it was my understanding that when this was to be agendized, it was to have a preliminary discussion to see, you know, to kind of tap into what we're feeling. Do we want to delve into this further? So that was my understanding of this. So I wouldn't expect necessarily a lot of data supporting this particular item. For me, it was just to get a feel as to where we wanted to go from here. Do we want to have a deeper discussion on this, or is this something that we might be serious about, and so forth? And if I may continue, Madam Mayor, there was a comment made, and I understand how this mistake could be made and be misinterpreted, but I certainly don't want any council members, certainly none of my colleagues, to feel like they're being singled out because that's beneath the dignity of this office. But on the item D six, it does say, discussion regarding councilmember singular term limits. I think it's very important to note that councilmember is an adjective modifier to the noun, so therefore, it's completely grammatically correct to use a singular form. It does not in any way convey that there's one council member being targeted. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for explaining that. So is this the end of discussion, then? The end of discussion. There's no additional motion on it. So I move on to item D seven. Update since homelessness workshop and regarding homelessness solutions task force information. Again, no action requested, information item only.
Have a question, Madam?
Who agendized this item?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, the city council asked that we provide an update since last being directed to form a homelessness solutions task force. And so what we did put together for you, and we can go through it point by point if you like, but what we shared with you is certainly some things that have occurred since originally being given that direction to form the task force, which include a series of meetings with stakeholders that we believe will be resourceful in helping address some of the homelessness issues. We've also gone so far as to having researched a number of different communities, counties throughout the state of California to see how they're viewing the issue and trying to get their arms around it and also address it. And we've also gone so far as to initiate a solicitation, an application process, if you will, to try to make sure that this task force that we do put together, that will be led by staff, but taking the representation of the community. We wanted to identify key stakeholders that not only, that deal with the issues on a daily basis, but can help provide some advisory as to which direction we should be going. And then finally, beyond the information that's contained herein, staff did attend today a continuum of care meeting, and I'd like to report back that it is appearing that these efforts that we're putting forward, including the formation of the task force, which we envision one of the first orders of business for that task force, is to come up with a strategic plan. These efforts are timely because the, through the continuum of care, there is an effort to have a countywide regional plan to address homelessness. And I think that's in large response to everybody's collective belief that there is going to be additional rounds of funding available to help fund the solutions we put together. So putting together a local plan to tie into a regional plan would be our next step, once we can get the task force formed, so that we can be more competitive in actually identifying additional funding resources to further efforts.
Question, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Jim.
At the city council meeting last year in Lake Eyrehead, I was one of the speakers in regarding, in regard to housing for the homeless. The county is continuing to work on that, I'm told. I'm told that there is additional funding and that agencies are taking advantage of that. Can you tell us where, since it's been discussed publicly, the Queens Motel project, which would provide housing for homeless, where that's at? Two, it was brought to my attention by a couple of phone calls that the city of Victorville was not, we were out of step with the low-cost housing, that we don't have sufficient low-cost housing. I don't know how that happens. I think we have a whole city full of low-cost housing. But our new governor has threatened to withhold road funds, which aren't have anything to do with housing, the cities until they get, until they get in step, or get in sync, or get in whatever. Is staff pursuing that? Is that just newspaper run amok? Is this something behind it, and is staff looking into it? Last thing we need to do is to lose road funds. These are two separate issues. I'd like to have staff comment on that, if I could, Madam Mayor.
Mayor and council, as far as the former Queens Motel now named the Desert Haven Project, the city has actually issued permits for the rehabilitation of that project. However, construction has not started because the developer, which is a partnership with the county housing authority, is making some minor modifications to allow for more spaces for services to be performed on site for the residents there. So they're making some minor changes, and then they'll be moving forward. Regarding the phone call, I believe that you're referring to an article, and I can't remember if it was in the Daily Press, but it seemed to indicate that Victorville was on the list of cities that had not met certain housing requirements. I believe it was RENA numbers. And I believe our PIO did issue a correction to that because we were not on the, we are not on a list for not performing as far as providing low-income housing.
So I'm sorry, I didn't hear. So that's to be corrected?
To be corrected, yeah.
Yes, yes. It was an error.
So we are in compliance?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. The other item that I happen to, since I've been involved with this homeless issue for some time, the question, are we going to work with the county? They have a task force. And of course, we have been in the past and going to continue, but I'm not what, I'm not sure, and I don't know what role that task force may play in this committee.
You have thirty seconds?
Thank you.
So the county has an Office of Homeless Services. We also, there is also a countywide consortium of care that Keith referred to earlier, and the ICH, the Interagency Council on Homelessness, is the governing board to that continuum of care effort. As you know, Victorville has a seat on that board, and we actively participate in that group. So it's not exactly a task force, but it is focused on countywide homelessness issues. And they will be working on, in the next three months, a plan to address homelessness on a countywide level. And as the city manager mentioned, as the city of Victorville moves forward with its strategic action plan to address homelessness issues, it really should be in line with the county's goals. And that will be our best way to make sure we can secure funding. So we do actively participate with the different county agencies, but we also have to do some things at a city level, which is the formation of the task force that we're undergoing right now.
Thank you.
Yes, very quickly, Madam Mayor. So I know that there's an effort to recruit volunteers to sit on the Homelessness Solutions Task Force. And I think the cutoff date for those applications is March 28th, if I recall correctly. Thank you. Do we have an idea as to when, or do we, have we set a deadline as to when we would like to actually have the task force that includes the stakeholders in place and operating?
So, yes, the deadline is the 28th. As of today, we've already received 51 applications to fill the 12 spots that we have available. Once the deadline passes, we hope by the next week to start reviewing the applications and start deciding, going through a process to decide which applications will actually end up filling the committee. So probably two or three weeks after the deadline to close, and then we'll start scheduling the first meeting to get rolling.
Very good. All right, that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Gomez, did you have anything?
How are the delegates to the ICH meetings partnering with the task force and the homeless coordinator if that will be the case? I know you sit at the ICH as an alternate, and I understand we're in the process of hiring the homeless solutions coordinator. And I understand that there's the Greens Motel, or not the Greens Motel, there's a motel that's going to be 24-hour wraparound services. But these are separate entities. How will you pull them together so that they're having a conversation in this task force?
That, that's in fact, the art and probably the biggest focus of our role. I think that's what we identified when we started talking about the formation of the task force, is because we're not experts in the subject, though... task force is because we're not experts in the subject, though we're becoming much more knowledgeable, and it's not, has not traditionally been a primary role for the city. There are a lot of other stakeholders, a lot of other service providers, including the county, that are all providing different forms of services. So it's been our adopted role, not only to create the strategic plan, but to serve as a coordinator of all those efforts, so that we're unifying them in such a way to where it was, working towards achieving the strategic goal, if you will.
Okay, and what phone number and what name to those people who are interested in being a part of the task force contact? I know there's an email, but there's no phone number, and there's no contact person. And some people want to use their phone versus an email. Also, who will be a part of the selection? In other words, is there a panel of individuals, three, four, five people who are going to be selecting and reviewing the applications? Who are those people? And what is the reason behind those people that were selected to be the panel that's going to select these applications? Why are they there? Their purpose? And the next thing is what ranking or number system will you be using so that we don't show that we're being unconsciously biased or prejudiced towards a friend, family member, or someone that we, we, you know, we play favorites with? How are we going to do that?
So to answer the first question about which number they can contact, the city prepared a press release that the Daily Press actually picked up, and it's covered on our website as well. Not just an email was given, my direct phone number was given, 760-955-5033, and I have received several calls since that press release went out. Regarding who will sit on the selection committee, the council tasked myself and Mr. Metzler as the staff to oversee that formation, so he himself and me, as well as a couple of key staff members, our community services director, our code enforcement official. They have been helping with the, address various issues related to the homeless, homelessness population, homeless population, and so they will help. As far as how will we ensure there's any, not any bias or family, yeah, that's just, we would have to recuse ourselves from any kind of family member or someone that would sit on a nonprofit or try to get a family member on the committee. So, yeah, that wouldn't occur.
Okay. The, your number and contact in the press release wasn't a part of today's agenda? So unless I strictly went to the website and someone said, well, Blanca, who do I call? I would, I would say, well, it's not on the agenda. Let me ask a staff member.
You have 30 seconds.
So that's why I was asking, because it's, it's not here, and I don't know how many council members specifically go to the website to find that information. This time I didn't, maybe next time I will, but I appreciate that information for the general public consumption today.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I thought the PIO sent it to the council, the press release. Thank you.
There is no action required on this item. So that's the end of discussion. Now we move on to our public comments. And I do have some cards. I have one person that left. I know they're not here. Angel Escupero?
Mayor Rodriguez Garcia, it's a pleasure being here. You know, because you're a blessing, a blessing mayor for the city of Victorville. And I would like to ask you if I could have an appointment with some help. I believe the city attorney is the one that can help me, or the Mr. Keith Metzler, the city manager, because I'm having a big problem. I have, I've been fighting for elders abuse, child abuse, and women abuse. And a lot of people don't like me out there, and I don't care. The bad people, I don't care. I'm for the right people. I'm for the city. I fight for the city, whatever city I'm at. I build, you know, in Azusa condominiums with my mayor. I build the Pacific College to stand. It's unbelievable what we did. We did $64 million for the city in three years. And I have a record to be the best police officer for the city of Azusa too, because they went by my law. I had to make laws down there for the barriers because they didn't understand. You know, I had to put a green line on all the writers on the wall, but we got rid of them, thanks to my Lord Jesus Christ. I'm a real knight from Spain. Mine was interpreted on Mr. John Kennedy. She had me teaching Spanish when I was 11 years old on the University of Tempe, Arizona. I'm a records. And my brother has the records still available of all the blue ribbons in practice. And we are very proud of it, and I'm very proud of my people. And you remind me of the grandma of my country, Mexico, Sara Garcia. She's, she's always in my heart. She was a blessing lady like you. So I need some help because I got into, I never had a wreck in my life. And this lady came, and I was in the middle lane already of Bear Valley Boulevard.
You have 30 seconds.
He came straight up, and he'd been head-up collision. And the officer, I didn't state that I was making a left turn. He stated on the police report that I was, that I stated. I got two broken ribs, three broken ribs. I got dislocated shoulder right now 16 days ago. I mean, I've been through a lot of pain, and I need to be corrected. And I need help because Mr. George Turan been doing his best.
Yeah, your time is up. Did you need to speak with an officer? Is that what you need?
Excuse me?
Did you need to speak with a police officer? No?
No, I don't want nothing to do with the police no more because they're incorrectly. They, they denied me the correctly. I asked him to proceed because I've been a police officer with the, with the right procedure. And he denied me. He didn't want to take pictures. He didn't want to make sure.
Well, your time is up, but I will have someone speak to you after our meeting, and maybe we can get someone that can help you.
God bless you. Thank you very much.
Okay, just sit there and wait, and we'll see what we can do. Ramiro Rodriguez?
I want to go back and talk about something that Blanca mentioned on C two, about having an outside independent council review certain instances and situations that happen here in the council chambers, which I understand it's, if there's nothing to hide, then there's nothing to fear. I've seen the, the accounting reports. I read the Kirk investigation report that they did, but it was all really what the city presents to them is what they see, and it's just an opinion that they give of those reports. But it's actually, they're not really auditing or investigating or searching anything. So it kind of left me feeling a little hollow that really, nothing was really, it was just skimmed over the surface. My personal opinion, it felt like the coroner doing the autopsy on somebody, he just did over. So really, I understand Blanca, Ms. Councilmember Gomez, asking for certain requirements from the council. It's understood of her, and it should be respected, that this is not always going to be like this all the time. Times are changing. People are changing. I've noticed we're not going to have any celebrations for, for the Hispanic community this year, or last year, or the year before, or the year next year. Mr. Cox discussed that we did have a very diverse chamber, but do we really have a diverse chamber? Or do we have the illusion of diversity? That's one of the things that we really need to ask ourselves here, if the council chamber is really meeting those demands of the changing populace up here in Victorville. If you go to the council, to the census on your phone, California Census, anything, Victorville, it's really biased on one side. So a lot of opportunities, a lot of services are being denied to people up here because we're not counted. Just ask the nonprofits how much they're struggling. The money's going somewhere else, because you have a numbers puncher in Hollywood and Washington DC.
30 seconds.
And New York, and they don't see that there's a Hispanic population up here. So how can we be counted? How, how can we be provided service? I leave with that. Thank you.
I have a question. We do not conduct the census. It's not within our jurisdiction. Staff aware, who conducts the census?
I know the city planner has some staff attending a meeting in preparation for the 2020 census, where we can have input as a city into how the census is conducted, but as far as, it's a U.S. Census Bureau that does it.
Well, I think that, I think that, you know, when it's said here, people here, they wonder, I think in this particular instance, because it's important, that at least we have some information that we put on the agenda for information only on the next agenda item. It's very simple. People need a number they can call or somebody they can contact if they have a concern. Thank you.
Those were all the cards that I had on the public comments, and...
Mr. Cox, don't we need to add it to the agenda? Because right now, you just gave direction to the city administration, and I don't believe that they would certainly acquiesce to what you've stated unless there's a council motion. But if you have the power to direct and they put it on the next meeting, more power to you. I agree that that should be on the agenda.
We're not there yet for, to our agenda items. Now we move on to our city managers' reports.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I have a few community service development activities to share with you first. As far as the community service activities, we've got a spring festival and egg hunt coming up. That event is going to be April 20th at Hook Community Center. It's something that we do annually. Tickets are now on sale, and they'll be on sale until the event is sold out. And admission is free to the egg hunt. I'm sorry, egg hunt is $5 per child to participate in the egg hunt. 21-day reading challenge is starting at the Victorville City Library. That's from the period of March 1st to March 31st. We also have Community Cleanup Day. That's our annual event, Saturday, April 13th, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. It's going to be various sites throughout the city of Victorville, no charge to participate. Volunteers receive free t-shirt, gloves, litter stick bags, water, and coupons for discounted lunch at local restaurants. It's a pretty amazing event, and it's a good opportunity to get out there and meet some of our community members and do the good for the city, which is cleaning up some of the trash that's just littered throughout the community. We talked about desert havens a little bit earlier, so I won't go too much further into that. Rubbermaid expansion, we've got a temporary CFO issued on the Rubbermaid expansion that expires March 28th, so we're expecting final to be in place probably before our next council meeting. And that's right there on Eric Expressway in Nevada, right at the footsteps of SCLA. Also, inspections are ongoing for the addition of a filling room line at Dr. Pepper, and that's currently underway as well. So they're adding actually a sixth process line to their plant operation. And finally, Animal Control will be hosting a low-cost vaccination and license clinic. That'll be Saturday, April 27th, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. here at City Hall. That's all I have.
Thank you. Now we move on to item E three, which is council member discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. We'll start with Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have none.
Oh, yes, thank you. In regard to the census data, I just would request that we put some information together. I saw a sign recently, I'm racking my brain, it was a billboard, said, "Are you being counted?" I think it was in Orange County, and it had to do with the census and urging people to participate. So I don't know where we're at, but I'd like to have staff to look at that. It's very important that everyone be counted, and so I'd like to put that on the agenda. I saw move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll hurry. The second one, I read in the paper that Mojave Water Agency is going to be dealing, I think at their next meeting, on the ramp down. When, when they ramp down, that's less water available, that's more makeup, that's more that we have to pay. I, I just don't understand with the drought being over, the wettest year in years and years, that they would ramp down. That doesn't make any sense. It's going to, it's costly to the city if they ramp down, and I'd like to have a staff analysis so we can better understand it. I don't know when this is going to be, before the MWA, but I just can't imagine that they're going to be for this. Well, wait a minute. We would pay more money. I can't imagine being against it, but I can't imagine us being for it. So I, unless staff is prepared to talk about that, and, and so I'm running out of time. The reason it's dark at Seventh and A, we have traffic signals that have four street lights. Seventh and A has traffic signal, but only two street lights on top. That's why it's dark. Sure, staff can take care of that. I don't, it may be too late to put the ramp down on the next council agenda, but if not, I think it's, it's money. We have to pay money for this. So if staff has any, anything to add, I'd appreciate it. That's all I have.
Want to agendize it? Is that it? For discussion or information?
Well, it's not going to do any good to agendize it if they're going to make a decision. I know they have a meeting next week, and I don't, not going to do any good to agendize it. Staff prepared to discuss this?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, as to the ramp down matter involving the water master, separate and distinct from MWA, that's something that we have been monitoring. I have a lot of information on my desk. I've been monitoring it and getting briefed from our Director of Public Works and Water. It was something I was already intending to send to you. I just haven't done that yet. So whether you vote to add that to an agenda item or not, I was already intending to provide a summary of what's before the water master, which is in fact, a 5% recommended ramp down for base annual production.
So we're only agendizing one thing? Everything else is just for discussion? The staff analysis, the streetlights, and the money to pay for?
Yeah, that's just for information.
Oh, okay.
Well, I have, thank you.
Ms. Gomez?
So on each of these items, I'd like to make a motion too. And then the first one is, we know that the city of Victorville spent $45,000, of which $4,000 went to marketing and $1,000 went to supplies for the preparation of our fall festival. The city council and the residents of the city would like to discuss and take action on allocating monies from now on to celebrate Cinco de Mayo, as we have celebrated the fall festival, and that's what I would like to add to the agenda.
Is there a second? There be no second, the motion dies?
The second one, I'd also like to add to the agenda, is many residents have been asking for the city to consider the month of May or the month of September, and every year thereafter, to be recognized as Hispanic Heritage Month from the city of Victorville. Proclamation shall be given beginning 2019, is what I've been asked. This is a time when we get to recognize contributions of the Hispanic and Latino Americans to the group's culture and heritage.
Is there a second? There be no second, the motion dies?
The third one that I've also liked to agendize is the capping of training and training meetings. education, and travel expenses for city administration, particularly. I've looked at the city manager's budget for sixteen thousand dollars in travel expenses, where a council member can't even get one thousand two hundred dollars to represent the city in educational meeting or any such things. Um, I have come to know that the host of a lot of restaurant meetings, um, is where he ends up paying and picking up the tab on tax mayor, on taxpayers' money, and that needs to be started, that needs to start being watched really closely.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
The next thing is, I'd like to discuss and agendize the reimbursement of the Green Tree Golf Course monies to the city through an assessment that can be initiated through property owners, property tax bill in maintaining that golf course. We approximately have six hundred and eighty homes that are abutted on that golf course. Uh, the five-year contract is up June 2019, and other than high subsidies, we need to have that percentage of homeowners. I know Mr. Cox lives right at that golf course and benefits greatly. We need to have an assessment, and I'd like to start exploring that process and that thought.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
Uh, and the last thing is, um, I lost, I'd also like to agendize is, the constituents have been asking for the city to consider the month of June as Pride Month to be recognized by the city of Victorville through a proclamation. June is lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, LGBTQIA history month, which is intended to encourage honesty and openness. By recognizing the month of June as Pride Month, we take a positive stance against discrimination and violence and promote self-affirmation, dignity, equality, rights, increasing their visibility as a social group, and celebrate gender variance.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
Do you have anything else?
No.
I don't have anything either, so we move on to E4. And this is, um, reports from council members, three-minute, uh, time limit. Mr. Cox, do you have something?
Well, I, I'd like to figure out how to answer all these questions. I'd, for anybody who thinks millionaires live on the golf course, I'll give you a tour. There's trailers on the golf course, there's rental units, it's one of the most assessed values area in the whole city, and I'll be glad to give anybody a tour. It is not what it says, what's being addressed here at all. I think there's more rentals on the golf course than anyplace else in the city also. And there's more complaints and downgrading from the assessment. It's factual data. I presented it at one time. It's regarded. Also, uh, somehow we need to address representing the public. We are elected to represent the public. We do that. That's what each one of us do. That's what all the taxpayers and voters expect. We do that. But then, once the city council makes a decision, and we go to another meeting, we have to represent the city. Clear and different distinction, and I'd be more than happy to talk to anyone anywhere about that. Um, I have eight thousand voters that elected me, too, and I listen to them all the time. I think they all try to call me. So somehow, in our reports, I don't know how to get this out, but statements are being made that are simply untrue and misleading, and I, we need to answer these, because one of the things that we kind of find out is, that's coming in here, we're very diverse. We want to be, you know, I have Hispanics in my family, I have African-Americans in my family, but they tell me that there's an absolute effort to try to divide the community, and we have been so happy and so proud, and we have talked about how diverse we are, and now we want to stop and back up and single out and pay attention to each little group as if they were different, and somehow each one is different than the other. I think we need to discuss this, uh, because the last individuals that I heard from was the African-American community, and I don't know that they represent the whole community, but they're pretty happy with what we have and what we've done. And, uh, we need to discuss this. If we are discriminating in any way against any group or individual, that is just not acceptable. We need to change it. But on the other hand, you know, we can have a proclamation every day for somebody or something, but it simply highlights that division, and I think we need to be very, very careful. I don't know where we put this on the agenda. I don't know how we do it. I don't know where it comes from. But I leave the meetings, and before I get home, I get calls from people saying, "Is the council going to respond to comments made for people who come up here?" It's like the opinion page. You can say what you want to, but because we webstream, people wonder, "Is it true?" And many times, so it's not.
You have thirty seconds?
We need to answer those people who come and take the time to speak. Sorry, thanks.
I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to express my sincere apology to our new fire department. I was out of state, uh, and came back early so that I could be present at the swearing-in and the badge-pinning ceremony. Unfortunately, um, due to unforeseen circumstances, I was literally stuck down the hill and couldn't get back up here. I hear it was a wonderful event. I'm sorry to have missed it, and Chief Benson, I ask that you would, um, share my good wishes to the rest of your team. Also, I, 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 I'm going to broach a subject that I've, um, not wanted to for some time, but I'm, I'm becoming increasingly concerned by some behaviors that are happening behind the dais, I think, that does a disservice to, um, the good working of our council, and certainly to the, um, um, health of our city. I'm, have listened a number of times to comments about, um, negative comments and allegations, strong allegations against our city manager. And I, I just really need to make sure that everybody understands that our city manager is under a contract. He has one boss with five heads. That's each member of the city council. We are to work in unison to evaluate our sup, our, our city manager. That occurs in closed session necessarily, because it's a personnel issue. Instead, I'm hearing incendiary language behind the dais that, um, that, for me, comes across as really a unilateral evaluation of our city manager. I don't think it's procedurally appropriate, um, and it, it's, um, not helpful, um, to our city. If there are concerns about things that the city manager is doing or not doing, these are the very types of issues that should be taken up during his regular evaluation, so... Having said that, I think it's very important that our community understands that we all have to work together as a team. We all come from different backgrounds. We all have different skill sets, different experiences in like, in life, and we get to bring our perspectives to the table, whether we agree with them or not. Councilmember Gomez has a number of people in our community that sing her praises, and I'd like to get to know her better, to see about those things. Um, I will hug and kiss anyone and everyone all day long, but at the end of the day, business is business. We've heard repeatedly that four council members are, um, able to have access to administration to prepare for council meetings. Councilmember Gomez used to have that access, but when one breaches the, the norms for decorum and, and those things that, um, are detrimental to the, the workplace environment, the city manager...
Si, yo se que a veces tengo muchas personas que se sientan aquí por hora, hasta tras hora, tras hora, y siempre espero durante mis últimos minutos para darle el agradecimiento que ustedes se sientan aquí hora tras hora, viendo que sus hijos son parte del, de lo que estamos teniendo aquí. Queremos traer la cultura y la población que sepa que no importa lo que esté aquí. I'm sorry, don't interrupt me. Um, la señora alcalde, desafortunadamente, toma el tiempo para bloquear lo que tengo que decir a la comunidad, que no entiende el inglés, y también hablo señas, pero me ha cortado en muchas ocasiones que esa todavía no la he tratado. Pero cuando usted llega aquí o me está mirando en video, usted tiene la oportunidad de llenar algo como esto por tres minutos, ponerse acá arriba y dar su opinión. No importa lo que usted quiere decir, quiere cantar una canción, quiere leer la Biblia, quiere decir qué tan malos o qué tan buenos somos, esa es la oportunidad que tenemos. Como personas, votemos o no votamos es nuestro derecho humano bajo la Constitución de los Estados Unidos. Y nunca deje que nadie le aporte intimidación, porque yo soy la primera que me bajo con usted y le, le ayudo el soporte, para que usted sepa que no solamente habla el español. Yo le voy a hablar el inglés y yo le traduzco con muchísimo gusto. So what I'm saying is, I have a lot of times where we have a couple of individuals that sit hours amongst hours just waiting, not understanding what it is that's coming across, and I'm here thoroughly to support you. If you have to come and do your three-minute speech, and you fill this out by placing your names, I will get up from the dais, I will support you where you're at, and I will interpret for you. And that's my goal, to make you have that power and that voice, not to be intimidated. You have individuals up here that are willing to hear your voice, and this is your right to be here, whether you are a person that can or cannot vote. You still have representation up here with our local city government, and so that's what I was saying. So when, um, when we ask for decorum and professionalism, and you have the chair, Ms. Gloria, interrupting, that just shows the lack of respect that we have in our leadership. And so it's, it's shameful to say that Mrs. Jones, she's, she's very ethical when it comes to talking and very nice, but she fails to understand that she should also target when there is an interruption. And that just breaks it off. Entonces, de todas maneras, me interrumpió, no le hace, ustedes tienen el poder en mí, hablo español, hablo señas. Los idiomas que yo pueda, yo siempre los voy a usar aquí. Aunque le guste o no le guste, vamos a seguir batallando el Cinco de Mayo. Lo vamos a hacer, vamos a seguir la batalla. Sea es negocio pequeño o grande. Yo estoy aquí para aportar todo lo que necesitas, y estoy aquí para ser elegida, para seguir a tu lado. Muchas gracias por todo.
I just want to say, I'm just trying to follow the decorum. There's nothing else before the council. This meeting is adjourned.